We want to call it to order the regular meeting of the Litchfield City Council. We'll all stand and say the "Feds Allegiance to the Flag" by Carl Moon Smith.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those that may be tuning in on Facebook, and it's not Facebook anymore, it's YouTube, YouTube, we have just concluded a special call meeting an hour ago, and we appointed a Code Enforcement Board. I want to recognize them by name and just make a comment or two about this. Stacy Whitley, Dr. Gabe Falkerson, Danny Joe Allen, and as an alternate, Rick Minton was sitting as alternate. Tyler Harold will serve as our Code Enforcement Officer. And like I said, I read a program out of the Kentucky League of City Magazine. Henderson started code enforcement in 2017, Franklin about the same time, and we're just now doing that. And the citizens of Litchfield appreciate the homes in their neighborhood that are junk homes. We clean them up. It will help every home value in the city of Litchfield. And I appreciate those people who have volunteered to serve because that's not easy and it's not always a pleasant conversation. But I want to assure the Code Enforcement Board that this mayor and council will back up what they suggest. When the Planning and zoning board comes with a suggestion here, I agree with them 100 percent. When David Rollins, Police Chief, comes here with a suggestion, I try to take it because he's a chief, or Lori, or whatever our departments are. And we're going to support Tyler and this Code Enforcement Board and help get rid of these dilapidated and abandoned properties in Litchfield. Before we move on to agenda, I'm going to name two or three things because I think people sometimes tune out towards the end of the program. Elsa and I went out to the new water plant this past week, and Darren Dennison took us through the new plant. They're about 80 or 85 percent done, hope to be completed by the end of the year. So we made a video of that on YouTube, and it's about 10 minutes long. It's a little bit longer than what I'd care for. But the great majority of citizens of Litchfield will never go through the water plant. So we've spent $13 million. Our old plant was 50 years old. It had become outdated. It was going to become impossible for us to meet new requirements for street and water control. So we went out there and took a video, the inside and outside of the two buildings. And if you look at that, you'll appreciate what you could do with $13 million. I also want to name their last East Main Market event was a week or so ago. I think it's probably amongst the most successful that I've been to. And I appreciate the hard work of those people that put in to make East Main Market the success it is. I've had 100 people tell me how pleased they were with it. Danielle, she's worked closely with Elsa. Wes has got a crew that puts the stage up and clings at the place. And also the Cecilia Bank and the people that provides this parking and stuff, people that lives up there are a little bit inconvenient sometime because we've got the street closed. I appreciate their cooperation. Next year, they're going to make some changes. I think they're going to go for the second Saturday night of the month because on Friday night, we're competing with lots of other events. As many of you know, Court Extension, tourism hired a company out of Wisconsin called Court Extension Group. And what they do for $10,000 is to tell us, can Litchfield support another hotel? You can't hardly talk to anybody that's involved with a sports program or an industry. I've been in every factory in Litchfield, and I ask, one of the questions I ask them, do you have executives come in here? And the answers have most always been yes, and it's always been yes, they're staying somewhere else. And we need another hotel. And the survey said that we could support a 50 or 60-room hotel. So we have been in contact with a company out of Wisconsin, and the gentleman's name is Jeremy, but I don't have his last name, and he's with Cobblestone. They have about 175 hotels across the United States, mostly in markets much like Litchfield. And he's going to be in Litchfield about noonish on Monday, November the 15th. And we're inviting people that's interested in that. I would say real estate people, business people, just people that are interested in it. They're welcome to come. And we kind of like to have an idea of how many is going to show up. So if you can text me or Elsa, or text City Hall 259-4034, I plan to attend. We'd like to kind of have a record who's going to show up. It's November the 15th. Noon is what Elsa told me.
Did you say where?
Well, we're going to depend on how many people show up. They'll probably be at the Central Main or City Hall, one or the other. And like I said, a lot of interest. And this is not to say that Hatfield has not served us well. The Hatfields have been good community partners. And we took this proposition of them first. We were reluctant, but they received us well. They were kind and generous. And I told them, did they want to take this opportunity? But Mr. and Ms. Hatfield have been, they've kind of got like me, they've got a little age on them. But they did appreciate, there was no hard feelings at all. And it would be a compliment to the good service to which they're already providing for us. I want to thank the Police Department for the trunk-and-treat program they had this weekend. And they really, really turned out good, didn't it, David?
We had over 1,500 kids, I'm sure.
I know. We went through five times before George made me quit.
That could have been a problem.
And they were full-size candy bars. That's what I had today. I say, before we start our agenda, I'm going to make one more announcement, and it's this. We've been working on code enforcement. I think my first, our first visit with code enforcement was when Denny Ventress and I went to Franklin, Kentucky, and talked with Kent and Powell, who's from Clarkson, but he's their city manager. And the next journey we're going to take is annexation. Those properties in and around Litchfield that ought to be in the Litchfield census. When you look at our census, and it says our average income, our average home is worth this much, worth that much, it would look so much better if we had some of the homes adjacent to the city of Litchfield. And all I've got is positive comment. I've had basically two families tell me they did not want to be annexed into the city of Litchfield. But we've got 21 police officers, we've got three full-time firemen, we've got the lowest fire rating that a city of our size can have. One place that I've been talking to, they want sewer there. And I told them, I said, I cannot promise you sewer. And that's not the way I would annex you, but I can promise you one thing, if you're never annexed, you'll never get it. Because there's nowhere, 90 percent of Litchfield is sewer. And you stay outside of the city limits, you'll never get it. But now I said, we could use the numbers. So I asked Kendall Clemmons to survey, give me the survey of the areas to which we're going to be proposing. I've asked Erling to work on that, and she has as well, and that's going to be our next project. And with all that talking, I'm going to start back to the agenda. And I almost have to apologize, but I'm afraid by the time people watch this, a half an hour, that they've closed off and missed a lot of the good, important stuff. And so Lori took time out to make us minutes of the special call meeting. Have you all had a chance to look at it?
Yes.
Any corrections, additions? I hear a motion to accept, Ms. Redd.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The bill list. Billy Dallas, I've been wanting you to do the bill list.
So moved to accept.
Was there any changes or anything that you seen on?
None that I've seen.
Now, a second?
A second.
Now, listen, we can both of you second.
Either one. Somebody got to second.
I don't want no hard feelings.
No hard feelings.
Okay. Clayton, we're going to let Clayton second this. All in favor?
Aye.
Bid openings for results on the Bevel Park Trail expansions. This has been going on sometime, and we're glad to see, get to a bid opening on that. Who's got that, Tammy?
Tammy, I don't know if we turned that mic on yet. Okay, we only had one bid, and that was from Scotty's Contracting. As you can see, it's $254,800, a little over. He did say that he kind of fluffed it up a little bit. And then Wes had been talking to him, and they were going to go over some things that we possibly could do ourselves to see if we could bring it down. I feel if we can't bring it down more, then I would hope that you guys would let me rebid it out there and see if there might be somebody else that might come in. That's just a little high.
Our grant, it was $194,000, wasn't it?
Well, it wasn't $194,000.
Yeah.
$187,000. But the actual money that we'll be getting is $149,000. City agreed to pay the remainder balance, so.
I see.
I didn't want to add more burden under the city for that if we possibly can't bring it down.
We're going to make this work. I want you all to look over that and see what you can do with Scotty's. But we spent $7 million on this building. We spent $2.4 million on a ball field. Spent $650,000 on 17 acres. We're going to try to make this work.
When he went over there to look at it, he said there's some areas that could not just hold asphalt, that it had to be concrete.
I see.
The way it angled, as Wes said, it just wouldn't have, it wouldn't hold. So that's why some of it is a little bit more than we anticipated.
So can you change the trail? Can you make it shorter?
Nope, it's got to be exactly one mile. I mean, from what is on the map, Wes went over and mapped it out, and it's a little bit larger, so we can shorten it some. But it does have to be one mile, and it has to be six to eight feet wide.
It has to be a minimal of a mile, isn't it?
Yeah, minimal of a mile.
How wide did you bid it?
Is that per your grant, per your money?
Eight to 10 feet it has to be for a multipurpose trail, so that we can have bicycles and walkers on the same trail.
Well, y'all work on that, Tammy, and.
Tell them how much you got to spend, and that's all you got.
He knew. He knew. But that's all we have right now. So I'll come back.
What are we going to do? Do we need to take any action on that?
No, just if you want me to take it back to Scotty's and see what we can work out.
Well, let's do, and bring us back to report.
Bring it back at the next city council.
We're not going to walk away from $150,000.
If he's going 10 feet, can't you go eight feet?
Yeah, we can do eight feet.
Two feet all the way around is going to cut it back a whole lot.
But like I said, he kind of was trying to get this into us quickly because he was trying to meet the deadline. So he did fluff it up because he didn't want to cut himself short and commit to something that he couldn't guarantee.
Yeah.
Bring us back to report at the next meeting.
Will do.
Do you have anything else to say?
No, sir.
Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you, Tammy.
Ordinance is related to Code Enforcement Board needing repealed, amended, a new ordinance. Erling, what have you got to say on all this? And let's get started.
All right, get started. And this is the first readings on all of these, so we won't be taking them both. And again, these are just to put it in compliance to give the Code Enforcement Board the authority. There is a new ordinance in here related to Tyler. He had to be given the authority to write citations, so that's the seventh amendment. Also included in here, we had talked about dumpsters a couple meetings back, and it was brought up about the issue with dumpster divers. There is a dumpster ordinance on the books, and it's included in here tonight. I did a little tweaking to add in the dumpster diving issue, so that's also in the ordinance that's presented. And that's going to, the way it's being amended, it would fall under the Code Enforcement Board. All right, an ordinance amending an ordinance relating to the ownership and maintenance of dogs and cats within the city of Litchfield, Kentucky. Whereas the city council of the city of Litchfield has determined that the property and health of the citizens acquire ownership and maintenance of animals within city limits be subject to reasonable regulations. Whereas the city has the power to impose reasonable regulations, and whereas it is necessary to amend said ordinance with provisions being added indicated by a solid line beneath them, and lines drawn through provisions deleted. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city of Litchfield, Kentucky, that amended ordinance 2019-04, pass 3419, shall be amended as follows. Any person who violates any prescription or requirement of this ordinance shall be guilty of violation. The city of Litchfield Code Enforcement Board shall enforce civil compliance with this ordinance or accord appropriate jurisdiction. Summary of an ordinance amending an ordinance relating to procedures for designation of unsafe structure. Whereas the city of Litchfield may exercise its power in furtherance of public policy purposes. Whereas the city has the power to impose reasonable regulations regarding vacant residential property, which may depreciate property values and contribute to deterioration of surrounding neighborhoods. And whereas it is necessary to amend said ordinance with provision being added indicated by a solid line beneath them and a line drawn through those provisions deleted. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city of Litchfield, Kentucky, that amended ordinance 2011-09, passed 81511, shall be amended as follows. Penalty section shall be amended as follows. Public officer, the public works superintendent of the city, shall be stricken. The city of Litchfield Code Enforcement Officer, hearing officer, the mayor or his designated shall be amended member of the Litchfield Code Enforcement Board. Section 152-02, procedure for designation of structures unsafe. Whenever a petition is filed with, stricken by the public officer, stricken by a public authority, or at least five residents of the city charging that any structure is unfit for human habitation, occupancy, or uses defined in section 152 dot 01A, or whatever it appears to the public officer of his or her own motion, that any structure is unfit for human habitation, occupancy, or use, as defined above, the public officer shall, if his preliminary investigation of the contents of the petition is close as a basis for such charge at issue and cost we serve upon the owner of, and parties in the interest of such structure, a complaint stating the charges in respect. The complaint shall state that a hearing will be held for the city of Litchfield Code Enforcement Board. Sergeant shall be hearing officer. The complaint shall state that a hearing will be held before the hearing officers or his or her designated agent shall be stricken and shall be in place. The city of Litchfield Code Enforcement Board at a place and time fixed not less than 10 days, not more than, shall be struck in 30, inserted 60 days after the serving of the complaint. Section 152 dot 04, hearing officer, stroke, Litchfield Code Board to issue order to owner shall be replaced. If after the notice and hearing, the hearing officer shall be stricken. The Litchfield Code Enforcement Board shall be inserted. Determines that the structure under considerations is unfit for human habitation, occupancy, or use. He is replaced with the city of Litchfield Code Enforcement Board, shall state and write in the final fact as per such determination and present same to the city council. Summary of the ordinance amending an ordinance relating to registration of certain vacant residential properties. Whereas the city of Litchfield may exercise its power in furtherance of public policy purposes. Whereas the city has the power to impose reasonable regulations regarding vacant residential property, which may depreciate property values and contribute to deterioration of surrounding neighborhoods. And whereas it is necessary to amend said ordinance with provisions being added indicated by a solid line beneath them, a line drawn through these provisions deleted. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city of Litchfield, Kentucky, that amended ordinance 2014-04, pass 61614, shall be amended as follows. Section 5 enforcement, civil violations of this ordinance shall be enforced by the city of Litchfield Code Enforcement Board or accord appropriate jurisdiction. Summary of an ordinance amending an ordinance relating to imposition and administration of occupational license requirement and payment of an occupational license tax by persons and business entities conducting businesses, occupations, and professions within the city of Litchfield, Kentucky. Whereas the city of Litchfield may exercise its power in furtherance of public policy purposes. Whereas the city has the power to impose regulations of license fees on trades, occupations, and professions. And whereas it is necessary to amend said ordinance with provisions being added indicated by a solid line beneath them and deleted portions with a line drawn through in order to enforce the stipulations of said ordinance. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city of Litchfield, Kentucky, that amended ordinance 2019-03, passed 21819, shall be amended as follows. Penalties, section 5. The city may enforce the collection of occupational tax due under section 3 of the statutes, and any fees, penalties, and interest is provided in subsections 1, 2, 3, and 4 of this section by, insert, enforcement of the city of Litchfield Code Enforcement Board, or by civil action in accord of appropriate jurisdiction. To the extent authorized by law, the city shall be entitled to cover all costs and reasonable alternative fees incurred by enforcing any provisions of this ordinance. Summary of an ordinance amending the new ordinance. Whereas the city of Litchfield may exercise its power in furtherance of public policy purposes. Whereas the city has previously adopted an ordinance relating to abatement of nuisances in the city, and whereas it is necessary to amend said ordinance to clarify a provision thereof with provisions being added indicated by a solid line beneath them in order to enforce the stipulations of said ordinance. Be it ordained by the city of Litchfield, Kentucky, that amended ordinance 2019-06, pass 4119, shall be amended as follows. Penalty section is amended degree. Whoever violates a certain provision in this chapter shall be guilty of violation. Shall be fined out more than $100 for each offense. Each day's continued violation shall constitute a separate offense. Civil enforcement that's as ordinance shall be by the city of Litchfield Code Enforcement Board or accord appropriate jurisdiction. Summary of an ordinance amending an ordinance relating to the spring of automotive, vehicle, machinery, and junk yards. Whereas the city of Litchfield may exercise its power in furtherance of public policy purposes. Whereas the city has the power to impose reasonable regulations regarding the storing of junk, wrecked, nonoperative automobiles, vehicles, machines, and other similar scrap or salvage materials in plain view of city streets. And whereas it is necessary to amend said ordinance with provisions being added indicated by a solid line beneath them and deleted portions with a line drawn through. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city of Litchfield, Kentucky, that amended ordinance 1997-16, pass 111797, shall be amended as follows. Any person who violates a provision or this ordinance shall be guilty of, insert, nuisance violation. And each day a violation constitutes a separate offense punishable by fine of no less than $25, no more than $250 pursuant to KRS 534 dot 04. The city of Litchfield Code Enforcement Board shall enforce civil compliance with this ordinance or accord appropriate jurisdiction. An ordinance amending an ordinance relating to the causing of solid waste in dumpsters or similar receptacles. Whereas the city of Litchfield operates a solid waste disposal site as well as a garbage pickup service. Whereas the city has the power to impose reasonable regulations regarding solid waste pickup and disposal. And whereas it is necessary to amend said ordinance with provisions being added indicated by a solid line beneath them and deleted portions designated by a line drawn through them. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city of Litchfield, Kentucky, that ordinance 1988-01, pass 44198, shall be amended as follows. Section 1, deposit, insert or removal of solid waste refused into, insert or from dumpsters or other, there was a misspelling in the original ordinance, so replace with the proper spelling, receptacle by persons or entities who have not paid the established charge for such dumpster or receptacle owned by the city of Litchfield, Kentucky, as hereby prohibited. Number 2, whoever violates the provisions of section 1 of this ordinance shall be guilty of violation. The city of Litchfield Code Enforcement Board shall enforce civil compliance with this ordinance or accord appropriate jurisdiction. An ordinance establishing a position of code enforcement officer. Whereas the city of council of Litchfield has a duty to enforce the codes established by ordinance. And whereas the establishment of a position to enforce said codes is in the best interest of the city of Litchfield in order to promote health, safety, and welfare of its citizens. Whereas it is desirable to establish a position of code enforcement officer and the duties of said position. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city of Litchfield, Kentucky, as follows. The employment position of code enforcement officer is hereby established. The code enforcement officer is granted the authority to issue civil citations for violations of codes of the city of Litchfield. The code enforcement officer shall attend meetings of the code enforcement board, investigate alleged code violations, and perform tasks required to enforce the codes of the city of Litchfield.
Thank you, Erling.
Any questions or modifications, or questions anybody's got?
Moon, you got any suggestions, or anything that you might want to see changed right now?
Not at the present.
Okay.
Probably will be after we get started.
Probably will.
And these are the ones on the books now that have just been tweaked, going along with the board.
Okay. Clayton, you got any comment?
No, sir. Wait and see.
Margie?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Nope.
And you don't need a motion tonight?
No, it'll be the next meeting.
Okay. Okay. Okay, Erling, thank you very much, and I appreciate all the work that you've done on this as well. I know that you've spent a lot of hours down here working on that, and you've worked with Tyler and Jessica as well, I think. Next thing on the agenda is executive session for KRS 61.810-1-F personnel and KRS 61.810-1-C pending litigation. If I can hear a motion to.
I make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll be in executive session in a few minutes.
Your motion to become out of executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Now, don't start this again.
Okay, who made the first motion?
I kept my mouth shut.
Yeah.
Who made the first motion? Moon?
Moon.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
We met in executive session about an employee that had a sickness and sick bank. And, Earlene, did you want to say something?
We'll just need to take a vote and identify that employee, employee number fourteen thirty-one. It's my understanding we're gonna take a vote on allowing, he's at four weeks.
We're gonna allow, my understanding was we're gonna allow him to use any accrued time from this year and three weeks from the sick bank. He put forty hours into the sick bank, so we're gonna let him definitely draw those forty plus two more weeks out of the sick bank.
Who's gonna make that motion?
I make a motion.
Clayton, do me that motion, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Did you want to mention anything on the other?
Just in regards to pending litigation, there were recently some depositions and pending litigation involving the city, and I just wanted to inform the council those in place and give a brief update on those.
Okay, no other comment then? Okay, looks like we're down to visitors, and, Haji, you got anything you want to say? You sure? Ruby?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Karen? Terry? Matt? You'll notice that we got our strategic plan in Kentucky League of Cities in the last few days. Matter of fact, it was, I guess it was Friday, wasn't it, Lori? And I, Thursday, Friday?
I think we got it Thursday and you sent it out Friday.
I sent it all out Friday and asked you to look at those, and then Lori made you hard copies of that for each of you tonight. It's about five or six pages long, and I asked, please look over that, and we're gonna spend some time on that, but since we'd, so take time to read over that. He's got a lot of good...
What's our plan with this, Mayor?
Mayor?
What's our plan with this? Are we gonna, like, try to meet, do like a special or meet early one day to kind of talk about how we proceed with it?
We do need to, and I said, we need to have an opportunity, I would say, this is the first time most members have looked at it or read it for sure. So, let's read over it and have discussion about it, and we'll have, let's draw some information of that, some direction the city needs to go on, and like I said, we may meet a half an hour earlier or so early prior to another later meeting. But, like I said, Moon, have you had a chance to read over it?
I've looked over it.
Just looked over it? Clayton?
Yeah, I've looked over it.
Clayton responded to me on the mail. Margie?
No, I've looked over it.
Okay.
I've just looked over it.
Well, let's read, let's read it and draw some information from it. It's full of information, it mentions a...
A lot of stuff we're already doing, though.
A lot of things we are doing.
Right.
It mentioned Morgantown, I said, Elsa and I went over to Morgantown a few weeks ago. Well, I talked to the guy from Henderson as well, and they're using some signs, some code enforcement signs, and I asked Tyler, the guy from Henderson sent me a picture of them, so I asked Tyler to get some of them. Did you get a, have you?
I have one blade and I'm gonna have local business maker.
Okay, well, that's good. Anyway, a lot of things in there, we've looked at other communities that are doing, we're already doing some things, and let's just, we'll make a plan to meet on that update, because planning a thing. Okay, I'm about ready to wrap up. Wes, you got anything you want to tell us?
No, I'm ready.
David Riley?
No, sir. I don't have anything.
Earlene?
Nope, I've talked enough tonight.
I think you have earned your salary, but we're not paying you extra. Lori?
The only things, two things I have is under the other, the chamber luncheon is November eleventh, so please let me know by the fifth if you all plan to attend that. And I spoke with Tim at the fire department today, and he wanted to remind everybody that their annual Christmas dinner is gonna be on December fourth at six there at the fire station one, and you're welcome to bring your spouses with you. So, just kind of, if you could get with me or Tim and let us know, that way we're not gonna need a head count. And one more thing, Sabrina will be taking my place at the next meeting, I'm actually gonna try and take vacation.
Well deserved. Lori, who do you think we're gonna rebid the old city hall?
Me and Earlene was talking about that earlier, we're gonna work on that Thursday to get that ad ready to go back out in the paper.
We have had a little interest in it.
Yeah, I think we've got four people that...
Yeah, we've got four people that once, once we rebid it this time, it free your hands to negotiate more on it.